I'd like to call the order of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education on August 7, 2023 at 6:30 PM. This is a meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education. It's a meeting conducted in the public but is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed in the previous meeting or presented to the board for discussion this evening. I'd like to call the order and as a courtesy, please silence your cell phones and stand to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Indigenous land acknowledgement statement. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Inishanawee people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Inishanawee people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation and a way of honoring the indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time immemorial. This land on which the Saginaw, Chipewa, and Neetra have resided and have continued to reside over centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Next is roll call.
Tim Warner, present.
Jessica Ternigan, present. Katie Reed here.
Nathan Thompson here.
Amy Bong here.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything that they would like to change? Not seen anything. Move into the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. The first item this evening on my report is a report from our Fancher and Maguire schools regarding the MTSS work in Houson during this last full year, MTSS multi-tiered system support. And I'll introduce Karen King, the principal at Maguire, who will lead us through the work that we've done. Thanks, Karen.
Good evening. Katie's on her way. She's giving her kids to her husband and trying to make it here. So it was perfect that I was starting anyway. So thanks for having us. We're excited to share a lot of the MTSS work that we've been doing with you. Before we start into our presentation, I'll just give you a little bit of info about the work that we've been doing with Jim Harris. Jim Harris is kind of our, I was calling him the behavior guru and he laughed when I said that, but his focus has been on MTSS and the behavior end of that and what it looks like to truly build relationships with kids and the impact that that has on your school once you do that. So he wouldn't call himself a behavior guru, but he is so good with looking at your system and figuring out what could we do better and then how does that impact our kids. So that leads us into this work. Fancher was on year two last year and Maguire was on year one. So the TFI is called the Tier Fidelity Inventory and it breaks down a ton of areas in your school such as parent communication, staff communication. If you came up to an individual student, would that student know what our expectations are at the school? Questions like that and then kind of rates you. And as we sat as a team last fall, we were probably harder on ourselves than giving ourselves the benefit of the doubt just because it really was like, man, you don't do this well. You don't do this well. You don't do this well. You get to the end. And yeah, our score for Maguire was eight out of 30 or for tier one was 26.67%. Tier two, 26.92 and tier three was 38.24. And those tiers again are talking about, tier one would be for everybody. Tier two is for students that might need a little bit more, whether it's behavior or academic. And then tier three is again a little bit higher than that. So that's where we rated, which is not great in any of those areas. So go ahead and go to the next slide. And sorry, I'm working this on my phone a little bit too. Maybe it'll be, I thought it might be too small for me up there. So the, in the past, Maguire had MAGIC and you can see the little acronym in there. Jim Harris met with our core behavior team. We had an MTSS academic team and then last year split into the behavior portion of that as well, just so that we could try to do great at both rather than having one team that's trying to target both either guys. So in the past, Maguire had MAGIC when I came on board and I felt like, man, this has got to be just me, but this is hard because magic stood for, going to the next slide, motivated action, generosity, integrity, and character. And when I was going through this at home and kind of writing out a matrix and making sure I was ready when I first started in November, my son said, well, how do you be generous in the bathroom? I'm like, you know, buddy, I think we're going to move on to integrity. Let's look at that instead. Because again, some of it just did not fit, but Maguire had been in the, just in that phase where you had to have an acronym. I don't know how many years ago that was, maybe 10 or 12 years ago and everybody just had the acronym. So that was the acronym that Maguire had used. And then as the matrix kind of evolved, they kept the acronym and then just changed what some of the letters stood for. So the idea is that whether it's hallway, bus, classroom, playground, anywhere you go, that there are certain expectations that you follow. MAGIC was tricky for me, but I was trying to not jump in and change a whole bunch of stuff he knew. So we were going to learn how to be generous in the bathroom as well as everywhere else. So when Jim came, he's like, so I'm just wondering how married you are to MAGIC? And I thought, okay, Aaron, don't say anything. Like just let your team see what they're feeling. And right away, some of the, there's, I think, six team members and three of them were like, oh, we hate it. This is amazing. I wish I would've said something earlier. So Jim kind of spearheaded that for us, but we went back to the drawing board as a team and then went to our PDIS team and said, okay, what do we know we need as a staff? And we came up with, go ahead and go to the next slide, please. Be, you don't have to be blind, but don't panic. No, you're good. Don't panic when I say something that's not on the slide. We came up with be respectful, or excuse me, be safe, be respectful, be responsible. And those were kind of our core three and we knew that kids are going to remember those, whether it has an acronym or not. We couldn't come up with something cute that we knew kids would remember, so we stuck with what we knew they would remember as our core values. So how we started is we tried to make sure we were creating a matrix that was kid-friendly. We even looked at like voice levels, walkie levels, trying to not have a whole bunch of traffic on the walkie and really targeting what do we need to say on the walkie when we need to say something? Because a lot of those things, we just didn't have a process in place. So it took us a long time. In fact, we didn't even start any matrix until into the beginning of February. So for me, I just want to get stuff done. Let's get going. I felt like we were going really, really slow. But then because we went so slow and did it well, we were able to move faster towards the end. Go ahead and move on to the next one, please. Is it a picture? Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Could you go back to the old one, Kevin? Oh, it's you. Sorry, Jim. It said out with the old. So this was our old matrix and that was just one page of it. There were two because remember we had the IC on there as well. So it was huge. It was difficult for kids to follow. It was difficult to go over with when I was meeting with students about some behaviors that we were seeing. So then go ahead and skip to you and then go to the next one. And then this is our new one. So we just had be safe, be respectful, be responsible. And then along the top, it has all the different areas. And then go ahead and go on again. Yep. And then that's our whole matrix now that's up in our school. That one is in the hallway and then cafeteria, really large. And then we have a small ones all over the school. In fact, I just put in a new order that as soon as our funding is ready, we're going to put in a whole new order to do even more because we realized, okay, we didn't order enough bathroom signs or we didn't order enough hallway signs. So it is everywhere and it's been amazing. Kids are able to tell us what the expectations are. And I even saw a third grader right before the end of the year. She was like, Dan, well, you know who Maguire is. My students are like, I know who Maguire is. She was kind of going up to it, well, this is what you're supposed to and this is what you were doing. And I had to just not even round the corner and just stay where I was because it was so cute, but I was laughing. And even kids are able to use this and that was our purpose. Our purpose was we wanted something kid-friendly that we were able to just kind of join together as a community and make sure that we knew what the expectations were together. Go ahead and go on. So overall, when we did the TFI at the end of the year, we found that we were able to, at the beginning it was 26.67 for tier one and we were at 73.3 at the end of the year. And again, we were a little bit harsh on ourselves because we want to make sure we can back it up if we're doing this. What are we doing to show that we're doing it? Go on to tier two. And then tier two, again, the same increase and then tier three. And tier three, we were at 38 and we ended at 68 or 67. And that is where we need some more work because we'd like to be, I'd say, 85 or higher in all of those areas. So we're excited. We have more work to do and we're excited about that. Go ahead and move on to the next slide. This is the part that made me emotional when I was looking at it and when Shane crunched the numbers for us. Shane is from the RASD and he is our, I don't know his specific title yet. He might remember it's like data something, something. Anyways, data specialist. Data specialist. He looked at all our numbers and figured out, okay, what did your suspension data look like before? What does it look like now? And this shows that we had a 24% reduction for all groups. So when you look at suspensions for total number of students, suspensions with students with an IEP and with our Gen Ed students, there was a 24% reduction for all three of those. And then you can go on to the next one. And this means a 56% reduction in number of in-school suspensions, 32% reduction in number of out-of-school suspensions and then a 36% reduction in the total number of incidences. And I know when I was telling you about looking at our behavior matrix and looking at our school-wide expectations, I didn't mention anything about suspension or, because that's not our target. Our target, right, is to get kids to understand what the expectations are and then help them rise and help meet them where they are. And we hope that that impacts their behavior and we were shown that it did and it was just awesome to see that because that was our goal. Go ahead and move on to the next one. This part was really cool too, just the changes and what it did. So if you look at the blue, it's showing you last year, oh, excuse me, 21, 22, and then the yellow was last year. And it showed that there were eight compared to four and then three compared to one. And then you can go on again. Total days of suspension reduced 21% overall and that was for students with IEPs. And this reflects an additional 17,384 minutes of instructional time. And that's what impacted me as a principal and as a parent, thinking about if this were one of my students that were struggling to be in the classroom, what were we able to do as a result of that? And that was huge when you think about the impact that has over time and how students felt like they were able to belong and that we just embraced them where they were and wanted them to belong. You can go ahead and go on. And then I stop here and have Katie come on. Good time. Had to give the girls my hug. So Fancher is in year two of the cohort working with Jim Harris, which is really exciting. So we started off, I'm sure Aaron mentioned, with the TFI where you really analyzed where your school's needs. I was not, as a teacher, back, gosh, I don't know how long ago with Linda as my principal. We got PDIS going, so it's not something that's new to our building, but completing TFI showed us where we needed to focus our efforts on in tier one. And so from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, we started this work last year with Jim Harris. We went from a 63% to an 80% effectiveness in tier one. And then as she will just show you, tier two and then tier three. So seeing that increase, tier one was our main focus of last year and then this year we jumped a little more into the tier two. And so year one, we did a lot like Maguire did. We had a matrix, SOAR for Falcon, safety, ownership, attitude, respect. As we did their walkthroughs, which is part of the TFI, it was pretty awesome. Any student that Shane or Jim stopped, they could tell them what SOAR meant and what safety meant for the hallway, what safety meant in the cafeteria. So we revisited our matrix to make sure we were affirming up the language, we're all using the common language and teaching it with intentionality. So we created slideshows that all teaching staff were using. Signage was something that we brought in last year. I think that was installed at the end of the summer. So we worked with Kaylee in getting our signage. Middle school has this. Maguire has it. So these nice big visuals. So in the cafeteria poster, day one at Fancher, all the kids are in the cafeteria. We teach SOAR, what SOAR looks like in the cafeteria. And then positive reinforcement school-wide over the years. Maybe classroom, we're doing certain things. If school had certain things, we all got on board with something called class dojo to just positively reaffirm students from meeting the expectations. And we have a Fancher school store, which is really motivating for kids so they use those dojos so they're caught meeting an expectation. They use those dojos for five recess for the whole class. Dumping me at the end of the school year, maybe some time with our therapy dog. So it was really great cover system, school-wide where kids are motivated, teachers are all using the same language. They know in PE class I could earn dojos and I can earn, you know, dojos with Mrs. Warren, with my fourth grade class. Tier one, two, we worked on how are we recording those behaviors and just a system school-wide and then installing a sort of practices. And then tier one, a data system where we can determine which kids need more than just tier one. Which kids need more than just a good job for meeting the expectation in the hallway or the classroom. They need some sort of intervention. So, and then what are those interventions that we can provide kids? So, and then next slide, year two. So then this year, we continued in our year one work. We actually worked with Pat Anstov's class and developed a playground video for teaching expectations where our students were acting things out and they did a great job putting a video together. We're hoping to make more videos like that for different areas of our school. So that's a teaching tool we use. And then same for tier two. The big change for this year, we had full day or half-day data meetings where we noticed, hey, student A has this many behavior incidents. Let's invite that teacher to come have a conversation with us and put together a plan. And so it wasn't just a, well, it feels like this student's having a hard time or maybe a teacher wasn't advocating on that student's behalf because they were really trying to manage a lot of it on their own. So we saw a lot of good things from those data meetings this year. And then same as Aaron should be for Maguire, the exclusionary discipline information, the data is awesome to see. So we had a 33% overall reduction in suspensions, 43% in school, 64 out of school, so 20% overall. Shows you a number, 10 or more days reduced and then exclusionary. So not as many minutes, but 3,000 when you think about things in minutes or just a school day out and that much instruction loss, that's pretty pivotal to think. So 3,850 more minutes our students were able to maintain. We know we need our kids not only in-school learning, but we also, in order to change behavior, we need them in-school to teach those skills. That doesn't happen at home. So pretty proud of our progress and then we were honored this year as a model school for our work in tier one. And again, it's a team effort. We have a great team at Fancher and Jim Harris and Shane have been huge, huge parts of that process and helping us. We are really fortunate to be working with somebody like Jim Harris in our district. So excited for year three and continuing to tweak and improve things too. We both are kind of on the same page with what to do now. Every year after you do the TFI, you do a review in the beginning of the year, just recapping, okay, this is what our target is and this is what we're working on for this school year. And then at the end of the year, you review your progress. So that's what we're going to do in the fall with our team. And we're planning on lots of, we have lots of bullet points already that are going to help us do even better this year, such as creating a menu of options. So if you want to teach behavior expectations, what are some choices? What are some read alouds? What are some teachers that have great lessons? And then those lessons can be uploaded there. Katie had mentioned videos. We're planning to implement more videos. We have two right now. Planning to implement more. We have teaching slides and options for teachers. We have some different videos we've found online too that we put in this menu and then we've made it open for teachers too to add their own ideas in. So hopefully we have lots and lots of choices for people to look at, whether it's tier one, tier two, or tier three. Because the goal would be for them not to have to come to the MTSS team and say, hey, I'm struggling with this student. What do you think? We want to give them lots of options first so that we don't waste anybody's time and maybe a team member can go to them rather than having everyone sit down together at first unless that's something that they want. So our goal is to review the TFI, review our matrix to make sure that we're confident in our teaching systems and that everyone is, as Katie said, using the same language and teaching it the same way initially. So that whether they're in art or they're in PE or they're in their classroom or the office, that they're seeing everything delivered the same way. Our goal is to continue working on that menu. That'll be a work in progress. Look at our staff and ask them, what PD is needed? What do you need? And how can the core MTSS team help you? So trying to survey them during the year, see how we can help. Analyze data at least once per month with that team and then share that out with our staff. At Maguire, I didn't do a good job with that last year with this being new. And I felt like we were kind of, okay, now we're looking at data. Oh, we got to shift this. And we want to be ahead of that a little bit and try to look at that each meeting and then share that with staff, whether it's at a staff meeting or if we don't have a staff meeting, then we want to do that via email to make sure it's out with everybody. And you can analyze, what do we need to do and now what do we do as a result of the behaviors that we're seeing? And then talk with our PDIS team and make sure that our PDIS team is nearing whatever we're doing at MTSS because all of that should be, all of those teams should be working together towards the same goal of helping our school culture and our expectations be met with our students. And if we're able to meet students where they are, we know that they're going to grow and they're having it. And then as Katie had mentioned, we want to invite staff to our MTSS meetings and we would have data days, kind of like Katie was talking about, and also half of that day would be for core teamwork. Because if we just meet on our students and we don't work together as a team and look at what are our goals and what are we going to work on next, we're afraid that we would miss some of that. So we have designated time already set for this coming school year that is already, okay, this half a day, we're going to be meeting on these three things and then the rest of the day is going to be meeting on students. So we feel like we have a good handle on what's coming. That doesn't mean we're going to know everything that's coming, but it does mean that we're ready and that we're excited and that at those schools, we know this is going to be the best year ever. Did you have any questions for us?
I don't have a question. I'd just like to say thank you so much for doing this and for bringing us all this data. It's really useful to see like measurable results and like you, I get a little bit choked up when I see all the, I'll get choked up again, like all the days that students are in school where they should be, that they might not have been in the past. So, thank you.
Question. So you're kind of in the middle. So you have lower Ls feeding into you and then you're feeding up to the middle school. And I know the middle school is the next on this space. How are we connecting these expectations as the children make those transitions? Is there any work going on yet for that kind of space? Either from the lower Ls up to you guys or from you up to the middle school?
That's a great question and Katie, you might have time to add too. I know bullying is working this year as well and that's something they're going to be looking at. I don't know if the expectations will mirror each other, but Jim Harris had recommended that they do or they're at least close. So I know that's going to be something that's looked at, but as of yet, we're not sure. We really hope it's not changing because we spent a lot of money on signs. We're going to do, we really tried to keep everything kind of, I don't mean, probably general is a good word. So that if we want to know what safety looks like, it's going to look the same at every school, but the word might be different. Does that make sense? Like, safety is something that Katie has at Fancher also, but she has ownership where I had responsible. So for example, those are kind of two ideas, but a lot of our expectations are going to follow. So that would be a goal.
And just to add, this year we created common plus expectations for the district, which was really nice. But I would guess when you dig like indoor matrix, we have the different acronyms, but a lot of the expectations are probably similar. So.
And I think it's also a part of the students knowing that there's a process. And so when they get to whatever school it is that they're going to next, someone is going to teach them those expectations. And that's, that's a consistent process across the board. So we're actually fortunate that next year Jim will be working with bullying and Mount Pleasant Middle School. So we'll have four buildings in, really focused on this work and we'll continue to expand that throughout the years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. I will just say too, Dr. Harris', time with us is funded through Crest Hues Valley RASD with 31N money. And that's the money that the state is allocated for school districts to focus on student mental health. So that's a regional person. Some of you got to meet him at the countywide board dinner. He's a great advocate. He's a great consultant and he's working in all the districts right now, Crest Hues in as well. So it's great.
So that's interesting with the comment of other districts are doing some of their similar work, so they're going to have some similar processes. So that gets committed to the district from other districts and still helping support those districts.
Definitely within our region. I would say that building these common expectations and establishing this common language is something that schools are focusing on all across our state, but certainly in our region, it's been heavy focus for all of our nine districts. Next on the agenda is the review of our Trune policies. So we're going to get in deep into these and have some fun. I just want to make sure that everyone is clear on their process because this really is a big process and it's a big deal. So we are in the process of changing our policy provider from NEOLA, who's providing our policy in our district for many years. We're moving to policies that are provided to us by Trune Law Firm. As you know, Trune is our retainer law firm, so we work with them quite a bit. What we really like about the policies is that they seem to be very current and very up to date with what is current and what is required of school districts by Michigan law. We also really appreciate the language that the policies are written in. They're very commonplace language, easy to understand, not written in legalese, and we feel like we can really embrace them. So in order to bring in literally hundreds of policies at once, our process has been that we reviewed the first half of them at our last board meeting. We're going to review the first half of them again tonight. And then also tonight, we'll review the second half of the policies. And when I say review, we're really just taking a high-level look. These are the topics of the policies that we cover. And under new business this evening, we're going to ask you to repeal the NEOLA policies that we have. So we'll do a board resolution. We'll go say, okay, NEOLA policies are no longer the policies of the Mount Pleasant Public School. And we will ask you to approve the 100, I'm sorry, the 1,000, 2,000, and 3,000 policies. It has always been a practice in our district that any policy is publicly reviewed twice before it's implemented. So we'll do those three policy, those three sets of policies, I should say, tonight, ask for your approval. Those policies, we initially reviewed the first time in our July meeting. At our meeting in two weeks, we'll once again look at the 4,000s, the 5,000s and our anti-bullying policy. And at the August 22nd meeting, we'll ask you to approve those policies. Since we are doing so many at once and since this really is a big deal, what we would then like to do over the next year, probably literally it'll take a whole year, at every board meeting, we will select a handful of policies and dive deeper into all those policies. So there may be some nuances. There may be some language that we call it this and the Trune policy they call it that. And we want to make sure that we're really adjusting the policies so that they're relevant and current to our district. We also want to make sure that we don't change the policies so much that Trune can no longer represent us. So it's going to be about finding a balance, but I think after we get past every of this, the August 22nd board meeting will start and depending on how late the policies will take, you know, five to seven policies every meeting, you'll know what policies they are ahead of time because they'll be on the agenda. So we can really look at them deeper, more individually and we'll just keep going all the way through the policies. Some will go very quickly and we won't have to worry about it. Others, we might take more time. Others, we might have to revisit at multiple meetings because we may have discussion. I may have to go back to Trune and then we'll come back together at the next meeting and finalize that. So much like NEOLA, Trune will have an update of policies twice a year. So almost as soon as we get these policies approved, we will also have a fall update from Trune. But that would likely be new policies to address new areas of state law or it could be some changes and adjustments to this. Kevin has worked really hard to put our policies on a program called Board Books. Thank you. You know, we're supposed to do. And so as soon as these policies are approved this evening, the new policies will be on our website. They will be searchable. So I think for anyone that's ever had to say, like, is there a policy that addresses that? The search and find feature is critical. So I want to make sure that we have that. So that product will look the same as you go into our website, but for two weeks, there will only be a portion of our policies. And then after the August 22nd meeting, the other policies will be included in the places.
I really appreciate that clarification, how we're working because we've said multiple times, these are living documents. And I don't know if this got mentioned in the last meeting because I wasn't here, but you know, we can't just really, really change these. We really have to do research and we have to make sure they're in line with state and federal law. So it's a process. And I appreciate that we're going to take the time to go over these again with a little more, go over these again and see what we might want.
Sure. I think that's important. In the long run, these have to be ours, right? We have to feel comfortable with them. We have to own them. They are our guiding documents, right? This is what tells us how we actually run our school district. And as a board, policymaking and policy establishment is a primary goal, right? So this is a really important activity for the board.
Right. And like, I don't know what's going to happen tonight, but so far we haven't had anybody. had anybody, any board member discover something that is going to bring us to a screeching halt, it's, it's unacceptable, so that's great. I, I appreciate that clarification.
Are there any other questions about the process before we get started? Linda and I are going to divide them off again. I'm getting tired of hearing any one of our voices. I think Linda's going to start with the 1,000s.
Just pick off the easy section. So, Series 1,000, Policy Overview, Mission Statement and Definitions. Um, Policy 1100, Policy Overview, the General Policy Statement. 1200, 1201 is our mission statement. 1301 is a Creation Amendment and Posting of Policies. And 1401, our Definitions.
Any question regarding the 1,000s? She very much took the easy section, just so you all know. So the next section, the 2,000s, i- is looking at the bylaws, how, how we function as a board is really the first part. So 2100 defines official roles, description, purpose, and board organization, that includes the roles of the board and board members, our school district's legal name, our legal, um, boundaries. Uh, the 2200s look at board powers, the authority to enter into contracts, and the authority to establish curriculum. I think it's important to note that these policies set the authority for the board, and then they also help the board delegate that authority to, um, administrators throughout the district. The 2300s look at board conduct, uh, including conflict of interest, board code of conduct, violation of board code of ethics, gifting, and board member reimbursement for travel expenses. 2400s look at board member, membership and duties, that includes board member elections, acceptance of open hours of office, board member terms of office, vacancies and appointments, board officers, board officer duties. 2500 looks at board meetings and the Open Meetings Act. So we establish meetings, we establish guidelines for electronic board education meetings, the electronic board meeting checklist, advance notice of remote participation, board meeting notice, affidavit of posting of board meetings on our website, the agenda, voting requirements, public participation at board meetings, board committees, and board organizational meetings. And that would be the meeting that we have in January of this year. Questions about the 2,000s?
For the 3,000s, operations, finance, and property, so it's all general operations in the 3100. 3101 is insurance. 3102, smoking, tobacco products, drugs and alcohol. 3103, copyright compliance. 3104, school cameras and monitoring. 3105, visitors and volunteers. 3106, booster clubs, PTOs and other support groups. 3106F, is that just the form that goes with that? 3107, use of detection dogs. 3108, service animals. 3109, curricular, curricular animals. 3110, data breach response. 3111, drones. 3112, hours and days of school operations. 3113, social security numbers. 3114, litigation. 3115, non-discrimination and retaliation. 3116, district technology and acceptable use. 3117, intellectual property. 3118, Title IX sexual harassment policy. 3118, Form 1, the formal complaint for that. 3119, experimental or pilot programs. 3120 is intention of complaint. Section 3200 is about finance and borrowing. 3201, accounting. 3202, budget and truth in budgeting, taxation and hearings. 3203, deposits. 3204, investment of funds. 3205, dispersments. 3206, property tax levies. 3207, school activities fund. 3208, intent. Skip that one. 3209, debit and credit cards. 3210, borrowing. 3211, post-insurance tax compliance. 3212, post-insurance disclosure compliance. 3213, electronic transactions of funds and automated clearinghouse arrangements. Should have had Ginger do those. 3300 is about facilities, real and personal property. 3301, purchasing and procurement. 3301A, purchasing and procurement with federal funds. 3302, acquisition of real property. 3303, gifts and donations. 3303 up, the form that goes with that. 3304, use of district property. 3305, sale or lease of district property. 3306, construction bidding. 3307, construction administration. 3308, distribution of printed material and advertising in school. 3309, plus inspections. Section 3400 is about school safety and security. 3401, school cancellation, delay, and early dismissal. 3402, drills, plans, and reports. 3403, report, reporting accidents. 3404, communicable diseases. 3405, bloodborne pathogens. 3406, integrated pest management. 3407, asbestos management. 3408, firearms and weapons. And then 3500, FOIA requests and record retention. 3501, the Freedom of Information Act. 3501, administrative guidelines and forms that goes with that. And 3502 is record retention.
Thank you, Linda. So those policies, the 1,000s, 2,000s, and 3,000s, were reviewed at our last board meeting, and those are the policies that under new business will ask you to approve this evening. We're now going to move on to the, I should stop there. Are there any questions before I move on? Okay, so we'll now move on to the 4,000s and 5,000s, but remember, since this is the first time we're publicly discussing these policies, we'll review these policies again at the August 22nd meeting, so. And Linda, you give the 4,000s.
Okay, just Series 4,000, First Rating for District Employment. 4100s are employee rights and responsibilities. 4101, non-discrimination. 4102, anti-harassment, including sexual harassment. 4103, whistleblowers protection. 4104, employment, employment complaint procedure. And 4104F, the form that goes with that. 4105, workplace accommodations for employees and advocates with disabilities. 4106, Family Medical Leave Act. 4107, Military Leave. 4108, Union Activity and Representation. 4109, Break Time for Nursing Mothers. 4110, reimbursement. 4111, professional beltment. 4112, extracurricular employees or volunteers. The 4200s are about Employee Code, Code of Conduct and Ethics. 4201, Employee Ethics and Standards. 4201AG, the administrative guidelines that go with that. 4202, Children's Protective Services Reporting and Student Safety and Welfare. 4203, Corporal Punishment and Limited Use of Reasonable Force, and the form that goes with that. 4204, Confidentiality of Student Information. 4205, Hiring and Backroom Checks, and the administrative guideline that goes with that. 4206, Employment Contracts. 4207, Third Party Contracting of Non-Instructional Support Services. 4208, Applicant and Employee Criminal Arrest, Charge, Conviction. 4209, Prohibition Against Abortion, Referrals and Assistance. 4210, Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace, Tobacco Product Restrictions. 4211, Alcohol and Controlled Substances for Transportation Employees Subject to the Omnibus Transportation Employee Testing Act. 4212, Employee Assistance Program. 4213, Anti-Nepotism. 4214, Outside Activities and Employment. 4215, District Technology and Acceptable Use Policy. 4216, Personal Communication Devices. 4217, Social Media. 4218, Employee Dress and Appearance. 4219, Attendance. 4220, Use or Disposable, Use or Disposable of District Property. 4221, Employee Speech. 4222, Unauthorized Work Stoppage and Strikes. 4223, Resignation. 4224, Personnel Files and Payroll Information. And we're at the 4300s, for non-exempt staff. 4301 is the definition. 4302, Minimum Wage and Overtime. 4304, Employee Time Keeping Responsibilities. 4305, Michigan Paid Medical Leave Act. 4306, Assignment and Transfer. 4307, Performance Evaluation. 4308, Reduction and Recall of Non-Exempt Staff. 4309, Discipline and Termination. 4400s are about professional staff. 4401 is the definition. 4402, Assignment and Transfer. 4403, Performance Evaluation. 4404, Performance-Based Compensation for Teachers. 4405, Reduction in Force and Recall. 4406, Professional Improvement Sabbaticals. 4407, Discipline. 4408, Termination. 4409, Non-Renewal. 4500s are about administrators and supervisors. 4501 is the definition. 4502, Assignment and Transfer. 4503, Performance Evaluation. 4504, Performance-Based Compensation. 4505, Reduction and Recall. 4506, Discipline. 4507, Termination. 4508, Administrator, Non-Renewal. And 4600 is in regard to the superintendent. 4601 is a general statement. 4602, Higher Ed Procedures. 4603, Performance Evaluation. 4604, Absence and Capacity. 4605, Gifts and Donations. 4606, Discipline and Termination. 4607, Non-Renewal. And Ginger's going to do the 5,000s.
Does anyone have questions regarding the 4,000s, regarding the Employee Section? Yeah, go ahead.
So my question's about 4103. Who are the Employment Compliance Officers? Or is that, is that to be determined?
No. Um, is that 4103 regarding what's going on over there?
It's at the, it's at the very beginning.
Yeah, very beginning. Um, so typically, for any of our employee rights programs where we have to assign an officer, we assign the title of the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, so that would be Linda's position. Um, when we get into our Title IX and harassment, um, compliance, we have, we have been guided by the state that we should have a male and a female compliance officer. So, um, right now, it is the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Curriculum, and the Middle School Assistant Principal. So that, that's going to be having those two roles. Over the years, we've had our Athletic Director serve the role, uh, it just sort of depends, but, um, have a male and female compliance officer in those cases was recommended to us.
Thank you.
So we won't, when we do these policies, we won't, um, put a person's name in them, we put the name of a position.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. I will say that I, I think when you compare, um, NEOLA to TRU, the Employment Section is a section that seems to be pretty different, not with the content of the policies, but the way they're organized. Because TRU policies have policies for professional staff, policies for support staff, and policies for administrative staff, and they have them divided up a little bit here in TRU, but um, NEOLA is, it's like a repetitive policy for every, every group of employees, and this seems to be more streamlined. So I, I think this looks the most different. Are you agree, Linda, that it seems the most streamlined? Any other questions about the 4,000s? Okay. So we'll move on to the Series 5,000 policies, and these are all policies focused on students, curriculum, and academic matters. So the 5100s are, um, focused on students' rights, and they include students' expression, lackers, search and seizure, age of majority, collaboration with outside entities, and transgendered students. 5200s include student conduct and discipline, so that includes investigation and arrest and other law enforcement contact, unlawful discrimination and harassment, retaliation against students, hazing, student appearance and dress code, student handbooks, student discipline. There is information within these policies regarding due process for students. It does include students with disabilities, it includes a process for reinstatement following expulsion, enrollment following misconduct at another school, and then suspension from a class subject or activity by a teacher. This does include the anti-bullying policy, although we will be approving that policy separately from the rest of the policies, as is required by state law. Um, the 5200s include student acceptable use and internet safety policy, student use of cell phone and electronic communication devices, GPS tracking and audio surveillance, with audio surveillance capabilities, emergency use of suppression and restraint, registered sex offenders, and personal protection orders against students. 5300s look at student enrollment, attendance, and records. They include compulsory attendance, absenteeism, and trudancy, enrollment in kindergarten, student enrollment in withdrawal, non-public school students, part-time attendance, school of choice, foreign students, homeless, homeless students, protection of students of people rights, and student records and directory information. 5400s look at curriculum, instruction, and parent and guardian involvement. Uh, 5401 is parent and guardian involvement in education, and includes communication with parents and guardians, rights of non-cosole parents and guardian, free textbook materials, and charging of fees and fines. Title I, Parent and Family Engagement Policy. Title I, Funds. Instructional Program and Curriculum Development. Academic Credits. Commencements and Completion Ceremonies. Student Promotion, Rank, Retention, Placement, Class Rank, Senior Recognition, Summer School, Homebound and Hospitalized Instruction, Homework, Grades, Reading Assessments, Instruction Intervention and Retention, Sex Education, and Work-Based Learning Experiences. 5500 is School Sponsored and Extracurricular Activities. And then includes policies regarding fundraising activities, student senate, bulletin boards and other student postings, school-sponsored publications and productions, school attendance on days of scheduled activities, field trips, extracurricular activities, extracurricular and athletic trips, public appearances of school groups, student-initiated non-curricular clubs, and student organizations. 5600 looks at student support services, that includes special education, includes an independent educational evaluation, section 504, and a student assistant process. 5700 looks at student health and safety, and those policies include addressing child abuse and neglect, student illness and injury, medications, student insurance, emergency anaphylaxis, opioid amnastic, school wellness policy, Do Not Resuscitate Order, and that includes an administrative guideline, lice, mites, and bedbugs, school suicide prevention, toilet training, concussion awareness, and immunizations and clinical diseases. 5800 is miscellaneous policies regarding students, and that includes closed campus, student transportation, student driving and parking, work permits, student audio and video recording, recording in district meetings, flag displays, and the Pledge of Allegiance. And that is all of the 5,000s. Does anyone have any questions regarding our policies focused at students? What?
So 5306.
Yes.
It's labeled foreign students, can that be changed to international students? Or does it need to stay?
I, I can answer that question. Um, so I wonder, um, I'm sorry, let me get that 5306. I wonder, um, I believe that policy is specifically addressing exchange students, so we wouldn't necessarily have an international stu-, I mean, I suppose we could, but for the most part, any international student we would have would typically be here as a part of a foreign exchange program. So let, let me see where we have flexibility with that policy.
It's also possible that that's the language used in a state or federal law.
Right, that's what these.
But it's worth, it's worth looking into, because it does seem a little awkward.
Yeah.
Other questions about policies? So, as you can all see, it's a lot, right? It's, I mean, it's, it's literally everything that we do. So I, I just want to again reiterate that we're going to continue to work on these policies over the next year. We'll take them section by section, we'll look at them, um, carefully before, you know, we, so we can feel comfortable with them. Um, I do also want you to know that this summer, in addition to Linda, Ginger, and Kevin and I really looking at the policies, we did also send them out to, um, our district experts. So for example, there's a policy regarding drones. Pat Onstad is our resident expert on drones, and students in his program become licensed drone pilots. We should have that policy with him to make sure he was consistent. Joe had lots of policies to look at regarding, um, technology and acceptable use. Ginger, of course, looked at all of our finance policies as well. So we definitely used our internal resources to make sure that the policies are not only, we want them to be legally accurate, but we also want them to reflect our current practices as well. So. Any other questions? Any other questions regarding policies? Okay. Thank you for your patience with all of this. The next item on my report is GSRP, and I think many of you know that we've got some exciting things happening with our great start spreading this program, but I did just want to take a quick minute to discuss it today. And when I say aye, I'm just gonna turn it over to Linda to have her give you all an update on where we are with the exciting things happening in that program.
Yes, you probably have heard in the news that the state is trying to expand preschool programs and GSRP programs, and so we applied as a district to add a room at Rosebush, Bowles, and Pullen. And I'm glad Kim and Emily are here tonight, because they have been very positive supporters of getting those little people up and running in their buildings. Kim has kind of taken on the role of becoming what's called a enrollment specialist. So there's a GSRP website, Kim logs in to find out where they would like to go, be at Bowles or Pullen. We're focusing on filling up Bowles and Pullen. GSRP in Rosebush has been running for a few years, so there are three classrooms there. We did get approved for a fourth, but we're not filling that one quite yet. We think we have our hands full with, with this addition, but the rooms are filling up nicely. Later tonight, we'll have a board approval for our teacher, we're, two teachers, one for Pullen, one for Bowles. We're very excited, and each of those, we already also have the associate teacher, which is, that's what GSRP calls their, their professional support. So we're really excited. We've got a lot of, a lot of details to work out as far as arrival time, dismissal time, when exactly we'll start, we're all learning together. Mike Skanetski is actually a district teacher's husband, and he's an expert on licensing, so I think he's giving us a little extra TLC with meetings and helping us make sure we're doing everything we're supposed to with licensing. We've had the lead tester come in, and we're just kind of getting up and running, so we still want to, we still have space, like him, and so we're trying to spread the word. We'd like, we can have up to sixteen, I think, I think that we were, the rooms are big enough for sixteen to eighteen students. And so there is a sliding scale, there is an adverse inventory, and so a lot of parents will qualify for completely pre, free preschool, but there are some other adverse factors that could also help them qualify for pre, free preschool as well. And if they don't one hundred percent qualify, there's a sliding scale, so lots of options, very exciting.
We do know that the programs won't start at the same time we start, just like, that's, we know that much, right? That's two weeks, and we won't be ready.
An ambitious goal would be probably middle September, middle to late September, before we have everything ready to roll, and we've got to get some little people desks and chairs and cots, but we're, we're gonna get there, so we're excited.
And middle September is when the programs in Rosebush typically start, so we're really trying to mirror the programs at Pullen and Bowles, so it'll be a cohesive program of all, all the classrooms together, so.
Just to clarify, this is the new, that the governor just signed, what, a couple of weeks ago, and power to us to correct this, right?
It all happened the last week in July. So it was grand one, but we're gonna make it happen.
And we don't have our hands on a budget yet, but...
They tell us it's coming.
It's coming. And Ginger's not worried at all.
So speaking of Ginger not being worried, we also received really exciting news regarding the universal lunch, our new program that's called Michigan Meals...
Michigan School Meals.
Michigan School Meals. So I'm gonna have Ginger talk a little bit about that, because that's a really exciting program as well.
Yeah, very exciting with the passage of the new state budget. We are allowed to provide universal or free breakfast and lunch for all students K-12 and our GSRP friends as well. So very exciting to be able to provide that to our families. Really, the only change our families are gonna see, they're gonna see a lot of communication come out from us very soon, there's a form that we need everybody to fill out. So regardless of if your student takes hot or cold lunch, or your family income level, or anything, we have every family to fill this form up, because we have a lot of other state and federal grant funding that is tied to percentages, free and reduced percentages that we get from these forms. So we need the forms filled out, so we continue to give the same amount of funding for our Title A risk grants, which provide amazing things for our students and our families and support a lot of staff as well. So just backend stuff, we have to write out some of our negative outstanding mail to St. John's, but there's, there's funding coming for that as well. So really just backend stuff that nobody besides us need to worry about, but the main thing, the most exciting thing is that we will be able to feed all of our students for free this year, so we're very excited about that.
And I think our board members have heard our high school students, when they're graduating the school year, share with us how much they enjoyed free lunch during the pandemic, so we're happy to be able to bring that back to them. And that will start on the first day of school, even though we just learned about this the last week in July, also, we will have it in place and then go from the start of school.
I'd like to thank the administrative teams involved for like getting all this stuff together so quickly. Thank you so much.
It's exciting.
Just to clarify, so we are asking everyone to do this digital online form, which is used this year, not necessarily to make food, but we're asking everyone to fill this out. And from that information, we're able to do multiple things, not just free lunch.
Correct. Correct, yeah. We're partnering with Final Form, which is an amazing new opportunity that families will hear about very soon from Jen, and we are pushing an online digital form, because it should be the easiest for our families. We will have people come that are open houses, and a little bit into the school year, we will start sending forms home to families that we have to have them, and make sure that we get them. But yes, it's, it's not about needing information to get the free lunch, your student will be able to eat free lunch no matter what, but it's about backend grant funding that we wanna feel, we can feel to make sure we continue to provide.
Which is already academic.
Yes, yeah.
So if my kid doesn't like to eat hot or cold lunch, or wants a regular lunch, you should, still should fill it out, because it's affecting academic supports.
Yes, one hundred percent. Okay.
Any other questions, room? At this point, we don't have any internal correspondence over the month, so we will move on to the citizens' request from the rest of the board on any agenda or non-agenda item. Seeing this tonight, we will start with John Brandy.
Good evening, how are we doing? I'm really happy to complain about the high school. I have a lot of complaints about middle school. I have two daughters who joined the middle school year late fall, and who've had nothing but problems from middle school, which I'm also gonna start having problems with the middle school policy with no phones. One of my daughters, she's been here a couple times, tried to go down to the office, get and take care of, having to call and contact us about it, never received a phone call, so she relied on her cell phone to contact us. We're very strict, you know, she's, I've been really strict, I try to teach these girls that when you're at school, you treat it like your homework, it's like you have to sign, every, every step you do, you want it, it's your future. I ask that the policy be compromised. Understand if students have their phones out during, while they're talking, whatever other shit your professions were. You know, the bullying thing, that's the best part of that, that's never gonna stop. I'm one hundred percent against bullying. I've bullied my whole life, all the way from middle school, elementary, middle school, high school. That's not gonna stop. It's not gonna stop if you bang the phones, it's not gonna stop if I get in and what they can and can't say, because you can't stop what they say and go out of, outside school. It's never gonna stop. All you can do is teach these students what to do with their emotions that matters. You know, their emotions, whether you can address emotion because somebody said something, they're ever a negative impact. It's never gonna stop. You go into the workforce, just like high school, all the work here, or politics, it's never, it's never ended. The best thing you can do for these students is just to prepare them for that. I mean, I, I failed, I failed medical, I had a job, granted, I love the home charge card, no. I didn't, I didn't make it in a fireman, I didn't make it in a factory, foundations, nowhere, because it was all politics. It's still about who's cool, the boss, who does this, and who has that. So I'm just asking, I mean, I was, I was, I was mad, I was ready to psych it, and everything I could do, I mean, I wish I died. You guys have enough policy and go, look over. I'm asking you to compromise with a cell phone. You know, our, our children have the right to contact just through the school, whether it's in between classes, or at lunch, or out there, you know, middle school, they walk the track. So, I mean, I get it, if I didn't have cell phone going on, I'm sure some, you know, we look at it, we didn't have that going on, we had to do this, we had to walk to school, you know? Things definitely had to change, and I, it took me a long time to realize that. So that's all I can say. Thank you for that.
Next is Seeley Bush.
Hi, so my name is Seeley, I graduated MPHS in 2022, after attending the school district literally my entire life. I always felt that some of my most valuable learning experiences in this school district came from field trips where we spent time outdoors. I understand that since COVID, we've not held the, you know, upper-middle elementary-grade camp field trip with Camp Hiawunta or Hiawunta. I believe that now is more important than ever to have this field trip. I've worked the past fall and spring at Camp Mystic Lake, just outside of Claire, during their outdoor education season. I've seen up close how much the younger children benefit from these types of experiences. Not only does it promote hands-on science, the students learn to work together through team-building challenges, the instructors, you know, not to brag, are all extremely dedicated to promoting an inclusive and positive experience. The kids learn so much and need to have fun, and, you know, get to have exercise with doing so. I think it's crucial that we don't deprive them of these sorts of experiences, and I don't mean to make this like an ad, I think you guys should just pick whatever camp, if you decide to do this, whatever camp really fits like what you guys are looking for, but I do just think that no matter where you go, it's very important that we bring this back, because it's so amazing to see how the kids grow, even like the two and a half days that they're there, so. That's all.
Next, we're moving on to the consent items. Starting off with the approval of the minutes, it was a July seventeen, twenty twenty three meeting.
So moving.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that passes, we have to move on to new business, starting off with the technology bid approval. And let's, John, come and speak to our bid process for the large venue AP. Thanks, John.
Good evening. On June twenty-ninth, we went out for bid on a large venue AP upgrade for the district. This is affecting a bunch of the larger spaces. The project includes a new sound system in the high school gymnasium, a new sound system and projector in the middle school gymnasium, a new projector in the middle school auxiliary gym, this will place new projectors and sound systems in the gyms at Fancher, Pullen, employer, and Ganyard, an updated projector and a new sound system in the gym at Bowles, and the new sound systems in the cafeterias of employer, Ganyard, and Bowles. Bids were opened on July twentieth. We had four bidders. We conducted post-bid interviews with the two low bidders, Moss Telecom and Digital Age Technologies. After the interviews were completed, it was determined that Digital Age Technologies did not submit a complete bid. So based on the interviews and our discussions with Communications by Design, we feel that Moss Telecom has the available resources to complete this project on the required timelines, and we are recommending that the bid be awarded to Moss Telecom for three hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-six cents. Any questions?
Can you talk a little bit about the voluntary alternate pipeline? I was supposed to...
Sure. The voluntary alternate piece will give the users the ability to project a projector from a laptop, iPad, or need a physical connection to the projector to, to present to those spaces.
Can you talk about the timeline for installation?
Yeah, so we purposely bid this out later in the summer, because all of the vendors, you know, are pretty much filled up for summer work, and we knew that we wouldn't get the selection of vendors that we wanted if we bid it during the spring. So the timeline will be hopefully starting this project around late October, and we've asked that it be finished before January first. So depending on availability of equipment, they said that should be an easy timeline to meet, and they will work around team practices and things like that during, during the school year, they'll work second shift or whatever they have to do to begin to those spaces and, and work with the students right there.
Do we have any other questions for John?
Thank you.
I move that we accept the bid proposal as presented. I trust Moss.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that passes. Next is the repeal of the Newola policy, with the exception of Policy five-two-zero-seven, which is the anti-bullying policy. So I, I think probably what might be the best thing for us to do this evening, as I look at this resolution, instead of approving the resolution, I wonder if we might just, maybe have a board member, if you are so inclined, make a motion to repeal the Newola policies, and then we'll accept the other policies. This, this resolution, I think, needs a little bit more work, and I think it'd be most appropriate to approve this resolution at our, at our August meeting, after we have approved all of the policies, if that makes sense. The more I read this, I don't, I think it would be premature to do this this evening. So I'm wondering if we could just have a board motion to repeal the Newola policies, do that separately, and then approve the Trune policies in series one thousand, two thousand, three thousand. At our next board meeting, after we revisit the policies again, we'll approve four thousand, five thousand, anti-bullying, and then do the resolution. I, I think that that, that makes more sense.
My only question is, if we rescind all of our current policies, then we're missing those equivalents for those...
Right.
Four thousand.
Right. But we can't have two sets of policies approved.
That's my question, is how to, how do we want to work through?
So, so what would maybe be best to do in light of that? And I, I do agree, it's confusing, so maybe it would be best to approve the one thousand, two thousand, three thousand?
Every city needs a separate goal.
The problem is that it doesn't line up completely.
Ah, that's true.
So even if we said we're rescinding the one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, it still wouldn't be an exact match. So I guess I can, I can defer to the, to the board. We could, I'm gonna cringe, she even said this, but we could approve none tonight and do all in two weeks, or we could do the one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, not rescind anything.
Well, how about we could approve with the Act of AP, October, August?
Twenty-second, yes.
Twenty-second.
So that's, I mean, that, that ultimately is the goal, with our next board meeting being August twenty-first, our first day with students, August twenty-second. So if we did that, if we did the one thousand, two thousand, and three thousands this evening, with implementation date of August twenty-second, and then repeal Newola at the next board meeting, I like that.
Yeah, I mean, we can't be policy-less.
Correct, correct. No, no one, no one wants it.
Well, no, that, that's gonna be the opportunity, just talking for a minute, because some boards that we're trying to get back to school.
So, so we're sort of combining items B and C under new business, but should anyone want to make a motion to that effect, that would be...
So my only question. We do have to do Policy five-two oh seven, completely separate?
Completely separately, we will do that completely separately on August twenty-first. So we will, we will approve the one, the four thousand, five thousand, and then we will separately approve fifty-two oh seven. Okay, yes. So when we approve the four thousand and five thousand, it will, it will have to stay in the motion, except Policy fifty-two oh seven, because that does have to be approved separately.
So I move... So I move that we approve the Truun policy series 1,000, 2,000, and 3,000 to become active on August 22nd.
Seconded.
And so that means very little.
Okay, we are, okay. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Sorry, we're waiting.
There, so we'll do, we'll do the other policies and the resolution at the next board meeting. So thank you, I appreciate that.
So has it made a question, so has it announced, so the Neola, on those?
Correct, correct. So what we'll say in the resolution is that we'll repeal the Neola policies effective August 21st, and then Truun picks up on the 22nd. August 21st and then?
So then this way, it's a universal for all of them, start implementation date?
On August 22nd.
Like how it has to be labeled this week, yes? Okay, so it'll all in the same?
So, yeah, at the bottom of every policy, it will say approved or implementation of August 22nd for everything.
Is it still valid to have them posted through board books and saying that these will become active on, so the public can see them? I know they're already up there, but just using that search tool?
We'll verify that with Truun, to see what we can do, yeah. So we can do something that says, you know, with that implementation date. Thank you.
So that moves us on to resolutions.
Yes, you have the board memo of these resignations that we are very sad about but wish well. Alessandra Casparano, Amanda Risley, and Stacy Zaya.
Is there a motion to accept the resignations presented tonight?
I move that we accept the resignations as presented. First, Ms. Casparano, R. Risley, Zaya, especially Zaya, who's been doing our ultimate education program for many, many years.
Oh, seconded. I, I just don't want to let anybody move ahead.
Hold on to them all dearly, yes. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we wish them all well on their future endeavors. All right, moving on then, next to new hires.
All right, we'll start with our administrative new hire. Emily Shiner is here in the office to, in the, in the meeting tonight, sorry, in the office, where she'll be spending some time in the future. My friend Katie is still here because it, her presentation about MTSS kind of fits in with the position that we hired Emily for. Our, the title is Whole Child Coordinator. Fancher has about over 400 kids right now, and all the work with Jim Harris and the fidelity with that, the data tracking, and to kind of sustain some of that restorative practices and all the things that they want to really keep in action is kind of the reason we came up with this position. So we're excited to welcome Emily Shiner as our Whole Child Coordinator at Fancher Elementary.
Is there a motion to accept Emily Shiner as a Whole Child Coordinator?
Still moved.
All seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And welcome for standing if it is turned. Thank you.
And then for our certified staff new hires, it's been a busy day, so if you check this memo throughout the day, we were very excited to keep adding to it. So Emily Brandigan has accepted a special education teacher position at Fancher Elementary, kind of in place of Emily Shiner, so that is exciting, and I think Emily was on the interview committee. Michelle Claywell has the new marketing structure at the GI Tech Center, joining us with lots of years of experience, coming from downstate, relocating in our area. Cassandra Ferry, again, new to the area, GSRP teacher, she'll be placed at Pullen Elementary. Maggie Low, Erin and I interviewed today, and she is replacing Alessandra Casparano at Wyre, and she actually taught with Mary Malarrango, who is here tonight. Mary is coming back to us. She had resigned earlier this year, but she's coming back, and we're hoping she will be a mentor to Maggie because Maggie was her student teacher. So small world and the stars of the line today, and we would like you to approve hiring all these lovely people. Oh, did I miss one? I'm sorry. And Caterina Marcinakova, she has worked with the district as a kindergarten paraprofessional and then as an at-risk paraprofessional, and we are excited to hire her with her master's degree in early childhood to be our GSRP teacher at Bowls Elementary. All right, and when Mary joins us again, she is going to be our art teacher at, at Pullen Elementary.
All right, is there a motion to accept Emily Brandigan, Michelle Claywell, Cassandra Ferry, Maggie Low, Caterina Marcinakova, and Mary Malarrango for, for hiring within the district?
Still moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we welcome them to the district and back to the district, so thank you very much. With that, we move on to the Board of Education for discussion. This is an opportunity for any board member to discuss issues or concerns they might have.
I've come. Today I drove by a middle school, there's probably 10,000 cars parked there. How is that project going?
When you say 10,000 cars, do you mean like?
Construction.
Like, I thought those ID badges were still turned off. It is going well. All of our projects are going well. I will say this, when, when you are doing construction in a school and you take a typical project and you try to cram it into six to eight weeks, it always pushes right down to the wire. And so that's where we're at with Fancher Elementary right now, that's where we're at with Muckles at Middle School. They've turned over about two-thirds of the building, of each building, to RPS so they can get in there and start creating classrooms. Teachers should be able to get in this weekend to get their classrooms ready, but we have open houses next week, Monday, Tuesday, and you know, our staff want their classrooms to be perfect, and so there's some stress and some anxiety about that coming all together, but, but they're doing the best that they can. I, I believe, was pavement being poured when you were there today? So the pickup drop-off move looks amazing at the middle school, that's going to be really nice. Our new additions, so both back here at Muckles and High School and at the middle school, we won't have ready for occupancy probably until January. That's largely due to the air handling system and getting everything installed, so, but the projects are still running on schedule. So I'm just going to ask for patience as we get through next week, but they're going to be ready to go and beautiful for the 22nd, so I'm going to track you. One way or another, it's going to happen.
Is there anything else, anything we'd like to add or say?
I just want to again remind folks that we've got meal distribution the next two Wednesdays over our last two. And I was wrong in our last board meeting, I said that, you know, we've been distributing our meals to around 250 students. It's actually more than 350 every week. So I had bad numbers, so they just done a bang-up job this summer, and that's each student getting seven breakfasts, seven lunches, so really meeting that need in our community, which we'll be able to continue to do for universal lunch, for our nutrition club program. We're just really lucky to have such a generous community, so.
Anything else? All right, then I thought we were meeting again.